Tuesday, February 22nd. Please stand for our invocation led by Reverend Roger Randall, Providence Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come today humbly wanting to thank you, Lord, for all you have done for us. Lord, I want to thank you for your long suffering and for your loving kindness. I want to thank you, Lord, that you died for our sins according to the Scripture and that you were buried and that you rose again the third day according to the Scripture. All of this, Lord, enables us by your wonderful grace to be saved. I thank you, Lord, for your forgiveness for the sins we have committed openly in your eyes and the eyes of others, for the sins we committed covertly, foolishly thinking that you didn't see. I want to thank you, Lord, for your forgiveness for the things that we did against your will. I want to thank you, Lord, for your forgiveness for the things we committed by not doing your will. Then, Lord, I would like to ask you for wisdom, for wisdom as these ladies and gentlemen endeavor to guide this great city of Mobile. You said in your holy Scriptures that "the wisdom that is from above is first pure, then peaceable, gentle, and easy to be entreated, full of mercy, and good fruit without partiality and without hypocrisy." Lord, this is the kind of wisdom that I'm asking for this council today in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ of Nazareth. Amen.
Yeah, if you would, a moment of silent prayer for the family of former Mayor Ron Davis of Pritchard. You may have heard that Ron died over the weekend. He was a member of the Pritchard Water Board. He is a graduate of Davidson High School and the University of Troy. He, after graduation, became a member of the Mobile County Sheriff's Office, where he served for 18 years before running for the city council in Pritchard and serving for two terms. And then, following that, he ran for mayor and was successful at serving as mayor in the city of Pritchard. So again, if you all would please remember Ron Davis and his family in your prayers.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's good to see everybody on a special day. And as we had looked at pre-conference, we discovered that today is Two-Two-Two-Two Day. February 22nd, 2022. A special day. We've seen this day something like this for a long, long, long time. If we still be living, amen. Again, it's good to see everybody. We've been having some good Mardi Gras season weather. And I'm looking forward to this coming weekend for a good time in Mobile. Ladies and gentlemen, we're laying at the Good Times Road, not only for Mardi Gras but for this meeting. But we do have rules at this meeting. At this time, I ask if anyone has a cell phone or any other type of electronic device at this time, please put it on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Any person designed to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution to ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must sign in at the city clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to address must be identified and retained to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the clerk's office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of February 15th.
No move.
And promptly moving to second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Glad everyone being here. What an honor and privilege it is for me to be on this podium and recognize two distinguished gentlemen from the first officer of the United States Navy. We have Commander Master Chief Antonio Perry. Obviously, we're here to represent the United States Navy because this is Navy Week. They have selected the city of Mobile to showcase what the Navy does. So what I'd like to do to begin with, I don't know if you've read the part of the document. But he is a native of Monroe, Alabama. Yeah? Monroe, Alabama. He doesn't have a name yet. Slide out of Louisiana. He entered the Navy's board with the opportunity to offer selection and training program in 1997. In 1993, he graduated from LSU and was substituted commissioned to the Navy Reserve Officer Training Program at Southern University. He earned his master's degree in business administration from the Ottoman Union University in National Security and Strategic Studies from the Naval War College. He is also a 2007 graduate of the Joint Force Expendancy Committee Executive Program in Strategy and Organization and the Standard and Regular School of Business. Currently, he's the Director of the Districts, Police, Supply, and Ordnance of the United States of the City of Mobile. So at the moment, I'm going to read the proclamation that I will make. We will make a few remarks, and then I'm going to introduce Commander Master Chief Antonio Perry. The proclamation, he reads. "The United States Navy protects and defends America as the world's largest and greatest country, always defend America. The United States Navy is instrumental in ensuring the safety and security of 19.2 billion dollars of annual export from the Strait of Alabama. Whereas the Strait of Alabama is surrounded by 4,548 active duty enlisted sailors and over 70 active duty naval officers, more than 635 Navy reserves, and more than 7,701 active duty and reserve retirees. Whereas the Mobile Navy with those special events, programs to increase the community's knowledge and understanding of the Navy
You name it. And I think sooner or later, I think that might have a debilitating effect on the overall growth of the business in Mobile and around the country because it's not just related to us. GDP in the first quarter, they revised it downwards to 1.8%. That's down two points from where it was last month. And you know, there are a lot of reasons for that. I think there's less government spending. They try to pull back on some of the programs that have been put in place over the last couple of years. The Fed's tightening up and trying to hold back inflation and they're also trying to kind of cut back on the spending. And then, of course, the consumer stimulus checks have ceased and that certainly has an impact on the overall spending. Supply chain shortages. We've all heard about those. I don't think they're going to go away anytime soon. It's an indication that's going on around the country and certainly that can contribute to inflation as well. And we're seeing that, as I said. And then finally, you know, for those people who do watch the markets, there's certainly a lot of stock market uncertainty right now. I think since the middle of January, the stock market's dropped by 7%. So it's something to be wary of because if people feel like their wealth is diminishing, they're going to spend less money as well. So things aren't bad now at the moment, but they certainly do have some things on the horizon that want to make us think about it the second half of this year. One other thing that we're working on, and I haven't talked about it, but I think Mr. West used to talk about it a fair amount prior to COVID. And that's the simplified sales use tax. The simplified sales use tax is really nothing more than a new tax that was implemented by the Department of Revenue to tax internet sales, put it simply. Unfortunately, when they put that in place, what they really did was they created a situation of inequality compared to the existing tax that already existed for the different municipalities. For instance, today, we receive 5% sales tax for the city on purchases that are made here. But under the SSUT, you know, we would get 2.4%. And I won't go into the detail, but there's another element of that equation that's based on population and that can even make it even smaller. So the SSUT went into place in 2016. Since that time, we've started doing some analysis on it. I think we probably lost maybe as much as $30 million in revenue because of that. So there's a lot of work going on now among various cities within the state because everybody's affected by it one way or another. And I think we're going to be looking at some ways to kind of reverse that regulation sometime in the future. So those are my comments for today. Any questions?
End of questions from the council.
Yeah, sure. The simplified seller use tax, what, did you say where do we stand with trying to get that revised?
Well, like I said, it had, we had started the program or started working on trying to reverse that. It has to go through the legislature. And in 2019 with COVID, you know, the effort started to get put on the back shelf for a while. Right now, we've got the top 10 cities working on that together. We're analyzing the losses together. We're putting together a plan to address the legislature at some point in the future. It's going to be difficult to do it this year because the legislature's in session now and will probably end. And before we really got too far into this, it was kind of hard to get on their agenda. But right now, we're just getting everything together to prepare ourselves for getting on the docket for next year.
Anything else from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, one question on the monthly finance report. You say we're 18 million ahead of budget on the call side. Is that primarily through salaries still?
I would say that's a big part of it. It's a big part of it. Because as you've probably heard, or you probably know, I think just about every department is probably running underneath what they put in the budget for personnel and some attrition that we had not planned for also.
Where do you see the economy playing into the last half of this year? I mean, just today, there was an announcement of Russia invading Ukraine. There's going to have some impacts that I think trickle down to this city as well when we start looking at energy costs, et cetera, that are going to have some significant impacts globally that will impact us.
I wouldn't say that I'd be ready to make a strong comment on where I think it's going to be, but I think the indications are there that we should be prepared for a slowdown in business over the course of the next six months. And I left that out, by the way. That particular incident that may be developing as we speak, I think it has a real negative effect on things like cost and just people's general overall feeling about market conditions. It's going to be something that we have to consider. But when you look at the trends, these trends have been developing over time. Last year at this time, the inflation was not there, it was on 2%. Now look at it, 7.5%. Last year, they were talking about GDP in the first quarter of this year being around 4%. Now it's down to 1.8%. All the indications suggest that, you know, we need to be watching what we do and being careful that we spend the money the way we really feel that we need to and just making the right decisions to keep the city operating well.
Thanks, Bob. All right, thank you so much.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
And promptly move to the second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The gentleman's adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on April 23rd on Donald Street, March 12th on Canal Street, June 18th on LeShure Road, March 26th in Public Safety Memorial Park. And I'll take the last one separate.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly move to the second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In a poll, those appeal pass.
We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance every first Sunday of the month from 3:00 PM until 7:00 PM, and this is on Moffett Road.
Move to change that to just March and April for Sundays in March and April.
Second.
And promptly move to the second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In a poll, appeal pass.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to fix the cost for demolition of structures at 1506 Diamond Drive, 526 Helveston Street, 2850 Hayes Avenue, 102 North Pine Street, 904 South Warren Street, and 1775 Juval Street.
Just open up the public hearings, but say properties that were just read. If anyone present that would like to address the council, you may do so by addressing the council at the top of the podium by stating your name and your address. If not, the public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Reverend Thorne. Following Reverend Thorne is Darlene Martin.
Good morning. Titus Thorne, 110 South Bayou Street, here in the city of Mobile, Alabama, the pastor of Big Zion Amysine Church. A couple of weeks ago, we heard one of the council persons say that we are turning the tide in the state. Last week, I heard another council person say we are right where we should be. But that small two-letter word used as a pronoun "we" gave the city of Mobile hope. "We" is back the mantra of what it is to be One Mobile. "We," me, "you," I. East side of our 65, the west side of our 65. "We," black, white, Hispanic, Asian. "We," the homeowner, the homeless. "We," the rich, the poor. "We," the working class, unemployed. "We," the ones who make up this great city of Mobile. We were feeling very optimistic about a fair, transparent, legal process of redistricting. A process that we use as a model for other cities, a precedence that we be setting for others to follow. We were buying into what the law had signed on the Chamber of Commerce building, uh, leaving Mobile. We were even given a refresher course on what the word "fair" and "leadership" meant. First word was "fair." accordance with rules and standards, not trying to achieve unjust advantage, free from self-interest, no prejudice or favoritism. The second word we was given was "leadership." "Lead," not divide. Move forward to a common goal, progress to a solution, and to deal in fact. When we heard all this coming from elected officials, one that was elected to provide fair and effective leadership, "we" was confident that "we," One Mobile, was heading in the right direction. We felt that leadership elected officials would give One Mobile a fair, free from prejudice and self-interest, redistricting map that reflects the 2020 census and give us four majority districts based on majority eligible voters. We knew that a racial polarization study would be no problem, and we moved One Mobile forward to a common goal that would deal in facts and progress to solution. We was all on board believing that "we" can do it. We can be One Mobile. But then out of the same mouth that said, "We are right where we need to be," the pronoun changed to the pronoun "you." And I quote, "You had your opportunity." What happened to "we"? Who is "you"? The ones who referred to as warning, four black faces. By the way, that reference is negative, derogatory, and rooted deep in racism. "You" on the east side of our 65, you that had to sleep in the park, you that come down week after week fighting for equality and justice. Who is "you"? What happened to "we," One Mobile? Don't take us back to the starting line. Don't take us back to Jim Crow era because we would not let that be resurrected in this day and time. You remember the definition of what it is to be fair, free from prejudice and self-interest? Let's make Mobile one. A wise man once said, "A majority black city wants majority black representation." Thank you.
Darlene Martin. Following Darlene Martin is Pastor Green.
Good morning. My name is Darlene Martin, and I reside at 2411 Cross Street in Africatown, Alabama. Over the past several weeks, citizen after citizen has come down and stood in this very spot and pleaded with all of you to do what is right by representing a new city council district map that finally and fairly represents all our community. The 2020 census showed that we are now a majority black city, and we should, and as such, the next city council district map adopted by this city must reflect that. The map represented a couple of weeks ago does not do that and creates more questions for citizens than answers. We are being told that 50.56% is good enough, and we should be thankful for it when it isn't the least bit acceptable. Why is the administration and some of the council members so against doing what is right? We are obligated to meet the requirements of Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, which specifies a new map must provide the black population a new district with a voting majority to elect a black preferred candidate. This map does not do that. For example, as we learned during our last election, from the mayor's attempt to appoint, many of our citizens are unable to vote because they have been disqualified by the system. So if anything, more than 0.56% of this voting population in the new district has been disenfranchised, the black population in the district would not have the voting majority to elect their preferred candidate. Can the administration provide us with that number or get it from the Secretary of State's office as soon as possible and make it public? These are not just details. This is important information that should be taken into account. If you are really trying to meet your obligation and being transparent with this and on other similar issues, would also build confidence in the process. The confidence much lacking in the process so far. As you move forward in the coming weeks, please take the time to be sure these questions are answered and we are doing the right things by the community and our city. Thank you.
Pastor Green, and following Pastor Green is Gary Hart regarding redistricting.
Good morning, Pastor Green. 1500 Hill Press Road, City of Mobile. I come this morning concerned about some things. First of all, when you say "great," that's in the eye of the beholder. I've come meeting after meeting, meeting after meeting, and everybody's talking about how great and, you know, what's great to some people may not be great to other folks. And then I'm concerned about having less than 53%. I think 53% is the bare minimum. Bare minimum is 53%. We have learned from our own experience, when the numbers get close, we lose. When the numbers get close, we lose. And then I'm concerned about people telling grown people what's best for them. We do it after children. And everybody that has come to this meeting, and we talk about voting age folk, voting age folk are grown folk, and everybody that has come to these meetings have been intelligent, have been grown, and I think that it's an insult for us to come to this meeting and be lectured. I think that's an insult. I'm a grown man. I don't need to come here. We need to be able to communicate, and we need to be able to talk, and it's high time for other folks to tell other folks what's best for them. So I ask you that you would really, really look, really look at that map. Really look at it. Really look at it and see, and see if we are asking too much when we ask for the bare minimum. We've been getting the bare minimum all of our life, and 53%. Those of you who know, that's the bare minimum, and that's what we're looking for. Thank you very much for your time.
Gary Hart regarding redistricting.
Good morning. My name is Gary Hart. I reside at 414 Winona Court, Mobile, Alabama. I'm here to ask us about this redistricting problem that we have. Why is it we can't hire an outside consultant to come in and do a comprehensive study? And that should determine and solve the problems that we're having. There has to be some compromises, some give and take on both sides within the council of the redistricting, which should be brought out through the study. And that's my proposal, we get an outside consultant and have him do a study on it.
Reggie Hill regarding resolutions 02007, 47169, 01190, 6173, 6184, 185, and 186.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Before I begin, I want to stand with this body, offering my condolences to my friend, church member and deacon, former Mayor Ron Davis. May those who loved him be blessed in this time of grieving. 02-007, I find myself once again aligned...
Mr. Hill, you know the rules.
Good morning, everybody. Red Hill 1007th Century. I was trying to make best of these 180 seconds. 02-007, I find myself once again aligned with the sentiments of my friend from District 4. We're moving prematurely. If we consider reapportionment before knowing our formal stance on annexation. This was a hot topic from its origins and even hotter during campaign season. So we need to finalize the position of how our city makeup shall be reflected and then redraw our district lines to comply with the law and what's pleasing to the citizens. I would also offer that skin tone, I don't believe is the issue here. We need leaders who intend to work for the satisfaction of Mobileans, not ideological justification and filling individual pockets with taxpayer dollars. Your color, while it is important, I don't believe is concerned. In your stewardship capacity, are you making decisions which improve the quality of life for the residents and then sustain a high standard of this such quality? Nothing else, as it relates to this line item, really even matters, and I want us to consider that. 7-169, I hope this body will find any way possible to ensure that the needs of Bishop State Community College are met. This is a vital component to the growth and productivity of our city and a true alum to District 2. The future of our economy here as Mobileans shall depend heavily on a properly functioning and time-adaptive community college. So let's get this done, please. 01-190, I believe that Terry Mitchell and the AHO Committee deserve a bit more credit for their diligent work on behalf of our animals. As well, I am confident what they have already presented to this body is sufficient enough to navigate towards the best future for our first campaign. Besides, we do not have the money for this type of endeavor. I want to move for time 60-173. The citizens are your third party. Let's try being transparent about the process, and I'm sure our more competent neighbors would easily help determine how to best move forward with the census results. Have we attempted, excuse me, to partner with local institutions who need the practicum and service hours to fulfill their degrees when they could come in and do these studies for us and we don't have to pay a penny? Has this even been thought about? For time's sake, I'll do my best to come back and address that again. But for, what's that, 60-184, 185, 186, is there anything that would prevent these agenda items from being passed unanimously? Once passed, how long would it take for those resources to be allotted to those organizations? And after being approved, would there be anything that would prevent them legally from receiving those funds? And I believe that the administrative, executive, legislative, decision-making body, whatever it can be called, can respond to any of those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. No comments from the administration?
Okay.
The council can answer the last three, Mr. Trump, with regards about that being approved.
Is there anyone from the council who'd like to address Mr. Hill?
Questions for the last three questions that he asked.
I'll just briefly say, I don't know any reason why they wouldn't be approved.
Okay, and is there a timeframe?
Mr. Hill, your time has expired. Anything else from the council? Thank you, Mr. Hill.
We'll take it up next week.
Ordinance is held over 02007, ordinance to provide for the reapportionment of the seven council districts in the city of Mobile.
Second.
And promptly move to the second, end of discussion.
Earlier this morning, there was some discussion about laying this over for time. I asked that we lay this over for five months. I'd like to offer that as an amendment to this motion to lay this over for five months.
Can we get a second? Our second, we have an amendment and a second, end of discussion.
Mr. President?
Ms. Gregory.
I believe you had an amendment of your own to the five months. Did you not say four months?
That was discussed in pre-conference, but Mr. Carroll spoke first, so right now his is at the table.
Is there an agreement for a four-month layover? Or are we wasting our time?
Well, if you want to take your amendment back, there might be.
Okay. I will accept an agreement to four months, Mr. President, and an amendment to lay this over for four months so that it can go out to the public as promised by a resolution of the council.
So you take back your five months, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're saying four months? All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, I mean amendment and a second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Staying.
Okay.
Aye.
So it's five to two, going back to the original. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Staying. Wait, 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 wait. We're voting on the original as amended, which includes the four-month layover.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Staying.
All opposed? Passed by five, staying by two. Man of clerk.
Mr. President?
Mr. We all.
Well, Chris has some...
That might read kind of confusing in minutes. Why don't we just move to hold it over for four months? Because we got the approve and then modified the actual ordinance, and it's just kind of confusing. I think it'd be better for the minister to say, "Hold over for four months," and so reconsider that, see what I'm saying?
And do you want to have a date certain on that? Go ahead and do the four months.
Four months.
Procedurally, Mr. Arlen, Mr. President, you might have asked Mr. Arlen a question. Procedurally, how are we going to do this? We're going to, are we going to vote to reconsider and then? Then we will?
Make a motion to hold over?
Hold it over.
Right. Reconsider the whole thing that just happened and then just move to hold it over for four months.
Move to reconsider.
Second.
Wait, I think, I think he has to do it, doesn't he?
Yes, he has. William has to do it.
I have to do it, yes, sir.
Carroll.
Motion reconsider.
Second.
And promptly move to the second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Staying.
In a poll, by two extensions. Carroll.
Mr. President, I move that we hold over ordinance 02-007, ordinance to provide for the reapportionment of seven council districts in the city of Mobile for a total of four months from the date in which it was presented to the council, which would be February 12. Is that not right?
June 21st.
June 21st, okay.
Can I get a second?
Second.
And promptly move to the second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Staying.
In a poll, pass or five, staying by two.
Mr. President?
Ms. Carroll.
Let me say thank you to the five council members that supported this because it gives us a chance to at least attempt to get out to the public what we currently have in redistricting, which is 02, I mean, which is version 2.8. It gives us some time to get to the majority part of the district so that can be informed to where we currently are.
Okay. 64008 and 64009, rezoning property located at 1452 Government Street from R3 to B1 and 4251 Bittensborough Road from R1 to R2.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly move to the second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In a poll, pass.
Resolutions held over. We'll take all of these except 6173.
And also about 169.
Well, that one, that one's, you know, that one's...
Yeah, it's not...
It was...
Also once. Also 47-169. Mr. Day?
Never mind.
Okay, man of clerk.
Okay. 01161, authorized agreement with LDOT for maintenance of passive warning devices for Main Street. 01162, authorized agreement with LDOT for maintenance of passive warning devices for Spring Hill Avenue. 08163 and 164, approving purchase orders to Gray Shift for annual renewal of forensic science software and purchase order to Thompson Tractor for scissor lift for the Arthur Outlaw Convention Center. 21165, authorized contract for Lexus Nexus for digital research subscription. 23166, accept these for right-of-way for the McGregor Avenue whitening project. 25167, grant easement to Alabama Power Company for Phase 3 reroute to Morgan Avenue and Creek Street. 37168, consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Ruby Smith doing business at Sure Transportation to operate a shuttle service. 6170, authorize the city of Mobile to join the state of Alabama as participants in the indoor settlement.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly move to the second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In a poll, pass.
47169, assent to the vacation of portions of Pearl Street, Lion Street, Hospital Street, and Basil Street.
Move to layover one week.
Second.
And promptly move to the second, end of discussion.
Mr. President, this, I've received some concerns from a pastor that has, that did speak to the previous president at Bishop State about ingress and egress, doing funerals and other things with vacation right-of-way. He was concerned that that would not be given, so I need to talk to him and also the pastor at the Lilly before we actually pass this to make sure that Bishop State is in... at the Lilly before we actually pass this to make sure that Bishop State is in, is parallel, or they're both on the same page as far as this consent of right-of-way and being able to use the street during funeral processions and other things.
End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed, hold for one week.
Sixty-one-seven-three, authorize the council president to enter into a retainer agreement or a contract to review the reapportionment ordinance.
Move to layover three weeks.
Second. End of discussion. As you hear that this particular item is laid over for three weeks, this would give us enough time to have a committee meeting along with this particular resolution, which asking for to enter an agreement with a third party for reapportionment, and also the polarization study. Also on our agenda under new resolution, there is another item that we will be discussing up in our pre-conference, excuse me, up in the committee meeting that's coming up soon. Six-zero-one-nine-seven, where is to hire a consultant for a racial polarization study. All this is tied into, again, redistricting. Since the administration is the one that supplied the redistricting through the council and these resolutions following, I'm going to hand this over to the administrative service committee and ask that the chair of that committee to try to come up with a committee meeting between now and the next three weeks to handle both of these resolutions together. Yeah, administrative services. End of discussion.
Mr. President, I just want to make sure when we get to sixty-one-ninety-seven, I suppose what we need to do is go ahead and take it up and then hold it over three weeks.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
End of discussion.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Mr. Jones?
I don't believe we need to hold over the consultant or take it to committee. I think we can just go ahead and vote on that. If we want to hold it over in light of the new resolution that was presented to us by Councilman Daves, that's fine, but I'm okay with this when we get to annexation, but there's no reason for us to do this twice. We need to pay for this once, not twice. I'll support it in annexation, but not now.
We can discuss that in a committee meeting. End of discussion from the council. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Interposed, five, two extinctions.
Consent resolutions being introduced, thirty-seven-one-seven-four through sixty-one-eight-nine.
By council rules, sorry, I was still thinking about the last, by council rules, these will layover for one week.
Consent resolution.
Again, sorry, got discombobulated. All right, waive the rules to consider these resolutions.
We're promptly moving to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed, Madam Clerk.
Thirty-seven-one-seven-four, one-seven-five, one-seven-six, recommend an approval to Davy Seaboard for issuance of a special events retail license for Callahan St. Patrick's Day on Marine Street, or issuance of a retail beer-table wine on-off premises license for Aldi on Range Line Road, or issuance of a retail beer-table wine on-off premises license for Aldi on Airport Boulevard. Thirty-fourty, one-seven-seven, one-seven-eight, one-seven-nine, one-eighty, one-eighty-one, and one-eighty-two, are fixing the cost for demolition of structures at fifteen-oh-six Diamond Drive, five-twenty-six Helveston Street, twenty-eight-fifty Hayes Avenue, one-oh-two North Pine Street, nine-oh-four South Warren Street, seventeen-fifty-five Duval Street. Fifty-eight, one-eight-three, authorized removal of weeds, Wheatling Group sixteen-twenty-four. Sixty-one-eight-four, one-eight-five, and one-eight-six, determine appropriations to the Universal Youth Foundation. Stars Over Mobile Quilts of Valor and the Village of Spring Hill serve a public purpose and authorized payment. Sixty-one-eight-seven, one-eight-eight, and one-eight-nine are proven awards a special bonus to the firefighter of the month, officer of the month, and administrative services employee of the month.
So move.
Second.
We're promptly moving to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed, consent passed.
Resolutions being introduced, zero-one-one-ninety through sixty-one-ninety-seven.
Per council rules, these resolutions will be laid over for one week.
We need to take up sixty-nine.
We're taking up sixty-one-nine-seven.
With the exception of sixty-dash-one-nine-seven.
Second.
We're promptly moving to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed, Madam Clerk.
Sixty-one-nine-seven, authorize the council to hire a consultant to perform and provide a racial polarization study.
Move to layover three weeks.
Second.
We're promptly moving to second, end of discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Interposed, five with two extinctions. Madam Clerk.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one-one-nine-six, call for public hearing to consider refusing to renew the business license of T.R. LLC doing business as Discount Zone located at five-oh-seven Azalea Road, scheduled March fifteenth.
Second.
We're promptly moving to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed, public hearing is called.
Announcements.
We're going to start with District One, Councilmember Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to let District One residents know that tomorrow we will have a meeting to discuss the new development on one-eighty-Stanton Road. The meeting will take on February twenty-third, it's going to be at seven P.M. at the Chandler Auditorium in Fermi Health, so I look forward to seeing you there as well. Also, you will receive a letter in the mail stating about all the community meetings that we will have coming up in District One. Our first community meeting will start at six P.M. in Midtown, it's going to be at Ashland Place, U.M.C. Church, so please come out on that date for more information, but you also will receive this in the mail. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Penn. Councilmember Carroll, District Two.
Thank you, Mr. President. On March fifteenth, we will be at the Hope Center with the community meeting scheduled for that area. It'll take in, I think that's speech thirty-six and thirty-seven, which are Plateau, Happy Hill, Magazine Point, all the way up to Chickasaw in that area. We will discuss redistricting, the current map as is, possibilities. Also, we'll be talking about blight and properties being restored to the tax laws, and at same meeting, we'll talk about crime and blight at the same time. And I believe that is it. The biggest item out there, we're also going to be on the agenda, will be the old Lad's Supply property that is on Papier Mill Road that is scheduled for rezoning, and that has been a big item out there. I hope everyone that gets a card will attend to have input about their community in the area. That's March sixteenth, six P.M. My meetings are open to everyone in the administration, all council members, and any other person in the city that would like to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. We're going to go into District Four, Mr. Reynolds.
No announcements.
All right, District Five, Councilmember Dave.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a District Five community meeting on March twenty-second at six o'clock P.M. at our usual meeting place, Westminster Presbyterian Church at the corner of Sage and Airport. That's March twenty-second, six o'clock P.M., Westminster Presbyterian Church. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dave. We can go on to Councilmember Reynolds for District Six. I mean, oh, Jesus, Jones.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. We had a great ribbon cutting last Wednesday at the Connie Hudson Community Center, celebrating Mills returning to that facility, and they've been serving about one-hundred a day already, so great news there, and if you haven't gone by, I would encourage you to go and check that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We're going to District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder that this afternoon, we will hold a Public Safety Committee meeting at Police Headquarters. They are expecting us there at about noon. Looks like we might actually make it by noon today, so please remember to go to this meeting at one o'clock, and then also make sure you are scheduled for the March second Public Safety Committee meeting, which is on urban camping. We will hold that meeting here in the auditorium, just in case we have a big crowd to show up, so that is March second at one-thirty. Coming up on Saturday, March fifth, there will be the annual motorcade for the Mobile Terrace community. It begins on Lincoln at about Third Street and goes around the community a couple of times. We'll have plenty of floats, antique cars, marching band, cheerleaders, dancers. It's always a great time for that community, so please come, and even if you've had enough of Mardi Gras, this is a special community, and they do a great job with this parade. I will be there with the pink fire truck. Friday, this coming Friday, actually, at Hillsdale, there will be a parade around the Hillsdale Recreation Center, beginning at ten o'clock. This is something that the seniors do every year, so it is a great time. A lot of people come in from the community to see this because it's a small, safe area, but the seniors will be parading at Hillsdale at ten o'clock this coming Friday. On March seventeenth, I am helping to host a meeting in the Park Forest community to discuss forming a community group for that neighborhood. In fact, the woman who is helping to spearhead it is here in the audience today, and that's Ms. Jen Irby. Several neighbors have come to me over time, asking about community meetings or community groups and how to form them, so we will be doing that on March seventeenth. The meeting will be at the Emmanuel Baptist Church at the corner of Ziegler and University, and postcards will be going out. They will hit mailboxes soon so that everybody will be informed. And that is all from me in District Seven. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory. And just to remind the, us, the council, and us as well as the citizens, that our meeting for next week will be on next Wednesday, March the second. Next Tuesday is Mardi Gras. On time, we'll be downtown, going up and down Government Street. Amen. But, yeah, and we will have our pre-meeting on the ninth floor of next week. Pre-meeting will take place next Wednesday on the ninth floor, and our actual meeting will take place next Wednesday at ten-thirty here in the atrium. Also, just remind that with the ordinance zero-two-dash-zero-zero-seven and resolution six-zero-one-seven-three and six-zero-one-nine-seven, I call for a committee meeting. Again, asking the administrative services to please set up a meeting in the next couple of weeks where we can discuss these items, and also, I'm going to ask the chair of our rules committee to also go ahead and come up with a committee meeting date that we can discuss the rules of this council. Also, wishing everyone a very happy and safe Mardi Gras. Hope that everything will go good as it's been going for the last couple of weeks, and that we will have a successful Mardi Gras. And to all the citizens of District Three, I will be announcing very soon where we will have a district-wide meeting, along with our annual Easter ad hunt. This is the last Tuesday that we will have in the month of February as the meeting, and for the last three weeks, I've been highlighting the achievements of African Americans that was born here or served here in Mobile, Alabama. I was at Planet Fitness, I think, on Friday, trying to exercise some of this weight off before the balls this summer weekend, and I watched on Fox News that, you know, they highlighted Mobilians, Lonny Johnson. And I was going to, I had in my mind who I was going to highlight this week, and just seeing how they highlighted Lonny Johnson last week was like, okay, that's who I'm going to talk about on Tuesday. For the ones who do not know Lonny George Johnson, he was born in October the sixth, nineteen forty-nine. He is an American inventor, aerospace engineer, and entrepreneur who also worked at a U.S. Air Force turns of service in twelve years as a stint in NASA, where he worked as a jet propulsion laboratory. He invented the Supersoaker. Any people know the Supersoaker, the water gun? And in nineteen and nine, and which had been among the world best-selling toy ever since. He also invented the Nerf gun when he patented it, and it became very popular, and as far as a toy blaster. Mr. Johnson, as I stated earlier, was born in Mobile, Alabama. He attended Council Elementary School. He also attended Williamson High School, which was an all-black school, and he drew much of his inspiration from George Washington Carver. In nineteen sixty-eight, Johnson represented his high school at a science fair in Alabama where he was the only black student attending the fair, and this was at the University of Alabama. Five years prior to that, the governor of Alabama stood at the, George Wallace stood at the doors of Alabama to keep people, African-Americans from entering, you know, Alabama College, University, excuse me. But five years later, you see that Mr. Johnson had won an invention contest. Mr. Johnson has held many degrees. He also graduated from the Tuskegee University. He attained his B.S. in mechanical engineering in seventy-three and a master degree in nuclear engineering in seventy-five. He also holds an honorary Ph.D. in science from Tuskegee University. Mr. Johnson, again, is very known for the Supersoaker, and also, he is mayor to Linda Moore, and they have four children and live in Atlanta, Georgia. Again, for the last four weeks, I've been highlighting Mobilians that have strived and achieved many accolades here, not only just in the city of Mobile, but throughout the world, and again, I do applaud all those African-Americans who went before me to set the pace for even for me to be standing here or sitting here as president of this council on today. Do we have any discussion from the council in the comments, and then from the administration? Ladies and gentlemen, to relate, at the Good Time Road.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get, I've got a motion, got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed?